One o'clock, and I want to just thank everyone for coming to the Sustainability and Environment Subcommittee Meeting, and the topic today is the discussion of the Urban Woodlands Ordinance that we've been talking about since April 4th, 2024. I looked up my calendar, I was, how long have I been doing this? And it's been a long time, but I know that good work takes some time. So, thank you everybody for coming. I see Brian Santinello, my colleague in government, Tim Allen is here, and those are the councilors that are present. Kathy's here. Hi there, Steve. Hi, Tom Ash is here, Alan Shea, Ken Shea, and Tim Sheehan is here too. No, Jay La Torre, Brian Skelly, and I can't see the name up there. Heather?
Hi, Vern McArthur.
And Lindsay's here, and Richard Allen. I mean, we're here. So, thank you all for coming. So again, this is going to be a conversation that we want to continue. Everyone has a copy of the most updated Urban Woodlands Ordinance, and I guess I'd like just to open up with comments. I do want to say that, as I said, we've been working on this since April 2024, you know, writing the ordinance, looking it through. We sent it to Ken Shea for review, and he made sure that there was nothing illegal in it. Hi there, Steve is here. Thank you for coming. And it's, you know, it's been a long time coming. Recently, in the state, actually, we've been dealing with climate change and figuring out ways to make sure that we mitigate the damages of climate change. And right here in the city of Springfield, in my neighborhood, the biomass plant is making a comeback. And we're fighting that because we know that, you know, we don't want our children to be exposed to bad air, which is what that would do. And we know that trees mitigate the bad air. So, right now, Springfield is number four in the asthma level. We were number one before 2012. After 2012, I think in 2019, went down to 34. We went down to number 34. We were off the top 10 list. Currently, we're number four. So, I think that's why I'm continuing to do this work and continuing to, you know, make sure that our future generations aren't impacted by negative decisions that we make today. So that's why we're here. So I thank you all for coming, for being open-minded. I'm gonna be open-minded, and hopefully we'll come to some sort of ongoing agreement. Hi, welcome. Hi Denise. So, do any other councilors want to take, make a comment or questions initially?
My first question.
Go ahead.
Could you just say who the members of the committee are?
The members of the environmental, it's myself, I think Brian's on it, and I don't know who else.
I'm not on it.
No, you're not on it.
So, okay. So, we have two people from the committee, you and Brian.
And just to be clear, we're not here to vote on anything, right? Like I said, this is a conversation. I know that there is some controversy in the ordinance and the way it's going to look in the end. So this is more of a, you know, figuring out where the maybe deficiencies are and where we can move forward to help make it more palatable, like I said. Okay? So I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilor Allen.
So I, I've obviously been involved with SCANS for a while, and I think I probably had the first meeting on this ordinance. I met with Alex in his office maybe a year and a half ago. And then I didn't really stay with the Urban Woodlands Ordinance. I continued to attend SCANS meetings, but the Urban Woodlands Ordinance kind of went Jay into Brian to do the research. But, you know, I'm interested in the topic. We have a massive need for development in Springfield. We also have a massive need for continuing to protect our environment. So this is where those things kind of meet. So I just, yesterday, I made a couple of calls to people who are in the room. I'm just gonna tell, and Tim Sheehan I talked to for a while, and Tom Ash for a few minutes, Tim for longer. And I just wanted to say, I also talked to Zeta last night at her house, and just kind of took what you guys told me a little bit and just prepared Zeta with kind of what you said. So I'm not prepared to speak on your behalf, but I just wanted you to know that that step took place, kind of thing. I talked to Mike Fenton about it, and then Mike said, why don't you call Zeta? So I did, and we had a conversation last night. So, I'm not prepared to speak on your behalf, but I, I think one of the things that, I was here for the zoning ordinance. In fact, when I got on the council, the zoning ordinance was 40 years old or something like that. And I was involved in planning an economic development. And I was committee chair or something on planning economic development. And the zoning ordinance was a controversial piece of potential legislation. That some people said, don't go near it, don't, you can't win, you have the developers on one side, you have the people who want the zoning ordinance on the other. And I still went forthright, we needed to do it. So I went forthright into the gap kind of thing between those two things. And we had a lot of meetings. There was a group that went on for years. I don't know if any, Phil Dromey's not here, but people who were members, people from the city council and from the public, who were part of the zoning ordinance, I think it was called a zoning modernization or something like that. And I know they were always proud of the fact that they had people from both sides of the table. So for instance, when we took forward as the new zoning ordinance, draft of the new zoning ordinance, I couldn't get the votes for it. I was in favor of it. I couldn't get the votes for it. And there were developers at the table like Frank Calacino, who was Colbrook, not Colbrook, Colvest, and Steve Roberts, who was F.L. Roberts. And there was another prominent developer, a couple others in and out. It was really, the discussions included their point of view. And I, I'm not sure if that has happened with this, where the developers have been at the table to discuss this. But that's a step that I think needs to be considered post this, because that was a big plus of that. It took a long time to get it, but both sides are at the table, both pro zoning ordinance changes and anti zoning ordinance changes. So that's, that's all I'll say at this point. I had some other suggestions, but I want to hear from other people who are involved in the work. I will say at the zoning ordinance, Ken Shea, who's our lawyer on this, obviously, he was a city councillor in there. I can't remember exactly when everything took place, but I couldn't get the votes. And Ken got on board and talked to me and stuff, and Ken had the magic of being able to get some votes that I couldn't get. And we got it eventually passed between a lot of the work I had done with the committee for a year or two, and then Ken's magic touch with getting some votes. So we got it. And I guess what I learned from that is just how you need people from all points of view to kind of eventually agree something. So that's all I'm gonna say for now.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Santinello?
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to reiterate what Tim just said, that this is really a balancing act between developers and protecting the environment. And I would agree that we should get some developers in here to get their testimony or their input on this. Now, we're not taking a vote today anyway. This is clearly informational. So I just want to concur with Tim Allen just said.
Thank you, Councilor. I'll open the floor now. So anyone comments? One thing that I will say in response to Councilor Allen, I don't know if you were here or not, but I did say that I think our next meeting is going to include developers, bankers, and people who are interested in developing, because of course we need the development, and we want it here in Springfield. We just want to figure out where that balance is. Anybody?
Councilor Gobion, if I may speak to you.
Thank you so much, Tina, for coming too.
I think that there's another group of folks that are stakeholders that we're not thinking about, and that's homeowners. So and I'm, I'm coming here both as a city employee, but also as a city homeowner who recently went through removal of one significant tree. And I have a significant tree in my front yard that has created significant damage to my property. And so I do think this exempts out homeowners from certain requirements, but it doesn't exempt them from all of it, such as the engineered site plan. Engineered site plan probably has a cost of at least $2,000 to $3,000 associated with it on top of the cost of removal of the tree. Our costs for removal of trees were about $3,000 per tree. That doesn't include the very large one in the front of the house, but there's a significant cost there. In addition, the tree is, you know, I am a big sustainability proponent, obviously, but there was a balancing act here, and I think that homeowners were always very concerned about increasing costs on homeowners. And this is something that, as I'm looking at it, any homeowner that goes through this and looks at that, one, there's a significant cost for an engineered site plan, and two, there are significant concerns beyond just life safety concerns with trees overhanging homes. We've also seen insurance companies giving homeowners 30-day notice to trim trees away from their home or they lose their insurance coverage.
If I can just step in there, so I do. Hold on, Amy. That is, that is a good point, and I think we have had homeowners in the last year join us, but that point never came up. So thank you. Go ahead.
I just, thank you, Councilor Gobion. I just want to make a distinction between the ordinance that Alex Sherman and the Forestry Division put through last year, which has to do with significant trees, significant tree removal, public trees and street trees. This ordinance only has to do with a piece of property in which well over 50% of the property is tree canopy. So it has nothing to do with individual trees or significant trees. That's all Alex Sherman's ordinance with the public trees and the significant trees. So a person would have to be cutting like 75% of their lot to fall into this.
Sure.
So we just want to make sure homeowners understand this is not homeowners cutting down their fortress.
Is it?
I thought you asked.
Yeah, that's not terribly clear.
Because I have five trees in my backyard, and I cut branches all the time. And I, I can tell you it's more than 25%.
Of tree, of tree canopy.
Canopy, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That's part of the negotiation that we've been talking.
So that would be a, because I have to cut, they're huge, and I have to cut branches all the time.
This has nothing to do with cutting branches. It has to do with clear cutting.
The full removal damage determining of any existing five and shady trees or significant tree from partial, yeah, potential five or.
And what page are you on?
That was.
We don't have a page in our.
In its current form, it does impact. Residential trimming, or taking down trees, for sure.
Oh yeah, but it only, but I just wanted to make clear that there's a difference between the significant trees, which is something that, significant tree monitoring, public tree monitoring, street tree monitoring, sidewalk tree monitoring, that's already on the books, and we have nothing to do with that.
I'm just, and I don't even know that. I just read this, and I know it would directly impact me. And.
Which is why we want the.
It's all about me. Right, and that's the reason. Cut down trees, huh?
And Tina, we live in a high.
I need her to cut down my house.
Right, and I live in an area with many, many trees on the property, large trees.
And you all know that my, my first priority, I think, on the city council is to make sure that the residents don't get impacted by greater costs. So if there would be any way for us to be able to, you know, mitigate that cost when we do something like this, that would be my first priority, I think, you know. But I think that as developers go, you know, they are making, usually they don't live here, right? And they're making a lot of money from cutting a whole bunch of trees down. Sometimes I feel unnecessarily. So I think, you know, as, as a income for the city, that would be beneficial.
So why is our residential component in there? It focuses on new development. Why has it expanded out the resident?
Jay might know. I think I can speak to that, Mr. Sheehan. And this is where the collaboration, I think, can make place to help us. One of the reasons it's written the way it is right now, this language, and just keep in mind, none of us that worked on this are attorneys. We benefit from Attorney Shea to kind of look it over and help us with that. But there's a concern that a large, single parcel of land that is currently, you know, heavily forested could be subdivided into smaller lots. Then, you know, to the size that would, you know, preclude them from any sort of oversight, have the lot clear cut, and then a second round of subdivision could allow them to redevelop the parcel back to where they want it. So that's really where the intent is, is to make sure that there's no way to avoid what we think would be some important oversight over this. But I think that if there's another way to capture the spirit of that and simplify this, I think we'd be open to it. Because in this ordinance, you know, and this was just our idea, we specifically say, you know, if you're owner occupant and you're cutting down like less than 10 trees, this really isn't about you, because the last thing I think we want is to ask someone to, this is probably the other Sullivan's point, to come in with an engineering drawing, because they're cutting down two trees in their backyard that are blocking, you know, solar panels or about to crush a shed or something like that. That's not really the intent of this. The intent is to add some greater.
That's good to know, because one of the things that struck me right out of the box on this is the sweeping scale. I mean, it literally has an impact on 37,264 parcels of land in the city. And that equates to 88.7% of the total parcels. So, I mean, it is mammoth in its scale.
And how did you calculate that? Because that wasn't our calculations.
Based on your 5,000 square foot.
But they have to have tree coverage.
Tree coverage.
So we, we talked to David Lanyers at Regreen, and he didn't give us a number like that.
Well, 5,000 square foot plus.
But that has to have the tree canopy and.
And most houses do have trees. And you're looking at the tree canopy and the impact of 25% coming down. I mean, those are sweeping numbers.
I'm just saying, like, the numbers we got from Regreen and David Lanyers were nowhere near that as far as like what lots and the percentage of tree covers on most.
So was there a survey done of lots?
Dave Lanyers did.
Yeah, but he's been so ill, he hasn't been able to come to the last like couple meetings. And it might be three or four months before Alex might know better. It was probably a year ago.
How many lots have 25% tree cover?
I don't know when Dave might be better.
No, no. But I do want to, do you have that information? But because, Tim, that's right, right?
So that's part of the analysis that I think probably shouldn't be done, to really see what the impact is. I mean, I have 25% with a tree canopy greater than 25%. That's the version that I am looking at here. I did my parcel. My parcel is a 50 by 100, city lot, that's 5,000 square feet, and I have 40% tree canopy. And I don't have large trees on my property. So I do think it has the potential to impact a large percentage in its current form of parcels.
I mean, without the survey, you really, without the survey, you really need to go with the 5,000 square feet, because you don't know.
But what we're talking about is 5,000 square feet of trees.
No, 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 no. No, land area is what you're talking about in the ordinance.
Doesn't have trees on them, and what we're talking about.
That's what I'm saying. If you, if you haven't done the survey to understand the impact and said, okay, this is how many parcels have 25, this is how many parcels have 50, this is how many parcels that have 75, you don't know the overall impact. The only way that you can, with what you have right now, the only thing that you have is 5,000 square feet or more, is put your property into the ordinance.
Right. Except, like I said, Dave Lanyers did have numbers I don't.
Excuse me, can I finish, please? I don't know what the 5,000 square foot plus was based on. Again, if we're looking at new development.
10, 10,000.
I mean, if we're looking at new development, we're talking about acreage, not square footage.
If I can just step in and just say, like, most of the clauses in this were based on other cities. So we took almost all of, I would say 90% of this is from other cities' ordinances. And what other cities found, again, speaking to what Jay said, is that if you do acreage, then there is subdividing and lots broken up and there's loopholes. And so what other cities found is you have to hold it to square footage. Or what happens is people come in, chop it up, clear cut it, and then turn it into the acreage. So most of what you're reading in there about percentages or lot sizes is based on the scientific and social studies evidence of Charlotte, North Carolina, and these other places, Atlanta, Georgia, Boston, Denver, all these cities that have already done this with private monitoring, and they've kind of discovered some of the loopholes. So the 5,000 square feet was the idea that, to what Jay had mentioned, that you have to have commercial and residential, and you have to have it a size that it can't be cut so small that they can find a way out of their ordinance.
Were any of those cities comparable to Springfield in terms of being post-industrial, significant populations that are low income?
Yeah, there's like East. Easttown, Pennsylvania, and West Bloomfield, Michigan were both, and Somerville, Massachusetts were all examples that had about the same size.
Population, but not demographic.
Median income was about the same.
Somerville?
Not Somerville. Easttown and West Bloomfield.
Can I ask a question? So I'm gonna use my, me as an example again, because it's about me. My lot's bigger than 5,000 square feet. I think I have more than, because we have huge trees in the back. So the city would have to be available to determine, to go to someone's property and determine whether there's 25% or more, and that my property would then be applicable to this ordinance.
Responsible to.
I would have to do it. So I, I would not have to do it. So I would have to hire someone.
And I think that's part of what's in there. You have to provide the.
Yeah, so I would. I mean, I think I do, but I would want to be a part of this if I want to trim or cut or whatever. So I have to hire someone to come and tell me if it's worth it.
Yeah, yeah. So on Tim's comment, I think we have done some surveys, and we have the reinforcement Dave Lanyers, but I think Regreen Springfield might be able to help us with that survey so we could get it, so we could have the accurate numbers. Because like we said, these ordinance, we got them from other municipalities. We didn't write it ourselves, right? And we put in what was there and what we thought would be good. And when Ken looked at it, he didn't see any illegalities on it, right? So that, which is what we were looking at. But now here, what we're doing is we're having these conversations, right? So we want to know how many people is it going to impact, right? It might impact my backyard, right? Because I have a lot of trees in my backyard. And we have to figure out a way to.
I just don't think the scale of this being aligned with what you're trying, the objective of what I think you're trying to learn to.
Which is?
And me, I said this to Tim, maybe I'm not understanding the objective.
That's what I was gonna ask. What do you think the objective is?
My understanding, or at least what I think the objective is, is that you want developers who are coming in, who are doing new subdivisions, not to do clear cutting. You want them to have a process that they have to go through in order to remove trees. I'm not so sure the scale of this is aligned with that objective.
So what do you think would be, would be better?
Well, I, I, and that's one of my other issues, is that, you know, I just saw this the end of last week. So I, I, I think from the city's standpoint, city staff's standpoint is that we probably need time to basically analyze it and figure out what the implications of some of this is. And don't get me wrong, there's positives associated with this as well, for sure. But I think we need to be informed about the operational and economic impacts of this as well, beyond even the survey, to understand it more fully as to what, what's the universe of what we're including in here? And what are the operational and economic impacts?
Okay, and, and thank you for that. And like I said, we've been doing this since April 2024.
I understand.
Versions of the ordinance have gone out, and we have sent it out to you, to Ken, Alex, to Tom, Phil, Chris. And there hasn't been any talk about it until today, right? So just for future, I would like, if we could, like, you know, when we have concerns like that, then let me know.
Sure.
Because we could have a conversation about it. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, that's, I think it's good to have these conversations. No question about, and perhaps somewhere there'll be a compromise and a balance of what we're talking about today and the future conversations you're going to have with, with other entities that would be concerned here. One of the things that when Alex and I, and Alex has been close to this, and I have admittedly, this is certainly his, his area of expertise amongst others. But in talking to Ken and Alex, one of the areas that jumped out at me at least was, as written, the ordinance now, in the 5,000 square feet in particular, would require a whole lot of extra work for Alex. I mean, a whole lot of extra work, and the burden on his office and his department, which is already taxed. I mean, he's chasing his tail most days, following up on three, one, one calls and all that would be significant. And so I think there's a real probability that we would be required to hire some, some new staff, probably at least two, and okay, we can go over that. But, so there would be financial implications to this too. Again, I'm just offering that as, as another talking point as we're working our way through this, to be aware that there will be some costs.
To try. Eventually, we made sure that there was a way to generate income. So like, for example, that what was just cut on Tinkum, that would have generated like thousands and thousands of dollars if that's what he wanted to do, is cut the trees. So that what we're hoping is like with Alex's ordinance, that with significant trees, that this money would go into that same pot of money.
Right. And, you know, and to that point, it's not the commission, the Woodlands Commission would hopefully do the majority of that work, right? And they would be like other commissions that don't necessarily get paid, right? But they would be the ones that would be looking to, you know, assess and figure out if the permit should be allowed or not. And then come to the city council.
I think within, like, most volunteer commissions, they're, they're volunteer commissions, they don't necessarily have the expertise that Alex would have or his staff. So I would just, again, offer that as a.
No, and I do understand, and I know it takes a lot of work. And I think I remember Alex, last year when we approved the grant that you got for the trees, we talked about, or I said, I mentioned it, and you said maybe it would be possible to be able to use some of that money for the Urban Woodlands Commission, whenever it came up, right? And, you know, of course, that money's probably down the road, but if we could, you know, of course, apply for some funding for that, some grants. And I know it's gonna take more work, absolutely. Usually, things that are worth doing will take more work, like we've been working on it for a year, over a year now. And I anticipate that, and I appreciate the cost that it's going to take. But again, the income that we could generate from this, based on, in the last 10 years, if we would have had this in place, we would have made some money from all the trees that have been cut down, if they were allowed to be cut down.
I will also say to Tommy's point about volunteer commissions, I did have several different contractors come out to my home, Certified Arborist. Alex also was very gracious, came out, loved his work. And each person that came out had a different opinion about what trees were healthy and which ones weren't, and what the remedy was, and what the appropriate remedy would be. So I think, again, when you're talking about a volunteer commission, folks that don't necessarily have that expertise, and then they block. and then they block a permit for someone to take down a tree or trees. And one of those trees falls and causes damage based on non-expert opinions, you've got another potential issue there.
Sure, yeah.
And diverging opinions from folks that aren't necessarily experts.
Okay. And from a financial standpoint, you're not going here, and I'm not against this. I, you know, I just have to tell you that given the uncertainty at the federal level and the uncertainty of the revenue that would join, I can't say that in the near future, I would ever recommend to the mayor or the council to hire a new position. I stand up in front of you in May and then in November, and you want me to cut the budget, you want me to raise taxes. And, and, and creating new positions would do that. Even if there's a small revenue source, it'll take a while to any monies to accumulate, and we're also paying for the salaries, the benefits, the health insurance, the retirement, et cetera. So I, I have to be straight and honest with you that I would not recommend right now to the mayor of the city council to create a new position for anything right now, given the uncertainty and the uncharted watering with the federal government. Totally understand. I have to be honest about with that. If that's the direction this is going in, and this is very labor intensive. From the monitoring to the, you have to make sure the trees don't die after eighteen months. If they die, you have to replant them. That requires someone to go out and check them and make sure they're replanted, et cetera. It's very, the public hearings, the following up for the law department, if they don't do it. So I just see from a financial standpoint, new positions, that is much revenue it's not gonna bring in, it won't offset the cost. So I wanted to put that on there.
No, go ahead, Tim.
Or just bog everything, but the operationally, the cities that you were taking the language from, did we take a look at what their operational capacity was in forestry?
Yeah, all three of us did much of that research. And the larger cities did create large volunteer woodlands commissions, like very specifically. And then the really wealthier cities like Boston and Denver were able to put them under forestry divisions that are obviously much larger than ours. But most of them did rely on what were called three commissions or forestry commissions.
Who behind the commission is actually, I, it, who's doing the work?
They're usually, like I said, some of them were under forestry divisions, some of them were under economic and planning development.
So do we?
It's different, yeah, they were all different.
Okay, but understanding how many people are actually working on behalf of the commission. On behalf, that would be representing the city's interests associated with the ordinance.
Right, so most of them are volunteer, like that we, looking at like the conservation commission, very similar. So there were volunteers that were selected. The burden of any type of reporting was not on the city. It was on the, the construction crew or the developer or the architect, just like it is with the conservation commission. They have to come with that material. The only follow-up was then afterwards, and that was where it was different with each city. To Kathy's point, some cities had economic planning people go out, some people had forestry division people go out for the, and that's that was mostly the oversight and enforcement part. The actual permitting part was almost all done, like the conservation commission, through volunteers and at the cost of the developer or construction company, it was only an enforcement oversight. And then there was different operational, depending on the size of the city and where they set it in the city infrastructure.
So, so just to be clear, this is not something that's gonna be easy to do, right? It's gonna take a lot of work, it's gonna be hard to do, right? But I feel like it's necessary. We have a challenge to be carbon neutral by twenty fifty. This is twenty twenty-five, right? And us cutting down whole lots of trees, the way we're doing at this rate, we're not gonna get there. You know, and we might go back to number one as the asset capital of the country if we don't do something. So I appreciate, you know, comments, but keep in mind, this is not gonna be easy, right? And that's something that I, I tend to, you know, kind of like run toward. If it's hard, we have to do it. Just because it's not easy, doesn't mean that we're not gonna do it. So I appreciate the concerns and the things that are brought up, because we have to think about that. You're absolutely right. We have to think about, you know, the budget, of course. And finding ways to, to, to do it in spite of all that hard work is what I hope that we will be able to do.
I think that's the point, is that there, there's, there's no question about the benefit. I think the issue that we need to focus on is the scalability.
Right, okay. And we're gonna find, hopefully, that medium there where we can do it. And we'll be able to scale it, even if we maybe test it on Wendover Drive, right? This time to see what happens and how it could happen. But we're gonna, you know, try to, to take it slow, we're not rushing this, right? This is not a, a race. It should be, because we need, we should have done this ten years ago. But, you know, we wanna make sure that it's done right. So that the city can do it, that the residents are gonna be able to afford to do it. And I even am thinking in my head, well, we should, you know, exempt the residents from having to pay anything, right? Because they're already paying high taxes. So that might be something that we might want to consider. Thank you. Uh, counselor.
I'm just gonna mention that Counselor Davila's and his race as well.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Solicitor.
So, okay, Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, good afternoon, everybody. Sorry, I cannot physically with you all. Great presentation, very interesting conversation. I do have a quick question, and perhaps either Amy or Jake can fill this question. Amy, thank you for the file that you sent us regarding the, where this is being applied in all the parts. I thought that was pretty helpful. But specifically, I'm looking at the example of talking about to Tim's point, the benefits of this. I think in Oregon, the average, the keeping the trees or having an ordinance such as this has helped to increase thirty million dollars in the resale properties. Is that correct?
Counselor says.
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, can you give me a little bit of a, a logic behind that and either you or Jay, whoever?
Remember what it was that I. Oh, the cities have added more than thirteen million in property resale value. That since the, so what they did was a study of pre and post. And so Portland, Oregon, and again, to, to that point, Portland is obviously a much larger city. But once it put through ordinances that were started to and again, this isn't about blocking development. I think it's important to see that what Oregon wanted to do was they wanted to develop public and private management of trees in order to create modern climate change-ready development. So the idea was that the development would be better, not that you would stop it. And what they found is, is that once these ordinance went through, that adjusted for inflation, the property resale values had gone up in that amount, adjusted for inflation.
Resale values, okay. So basically, keeping the trees definitely helped literally the, the environment, but also the economic development of the area.
Right. And, and Portland, like Springfield, was having issues where they wanted to develop more affordable housing, but they didn't want to lose the quality of life in the city that was keeping resale value in homes. So resale value was a priority for the city when they did the ordinances.
So how does the property appreciation directly tied to this trees?
That, with the, I, I can't, I don't know the entire details of the study, but what they did was they looked pre and post at a variety of sales. And, you know, I'm not a statistician, so I didn't understand that most.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, if I may, I didn't quite hear the question from Tim.
I, I was asking how the property appreciation was directly tied to the, the trees.
And I think when you have trees around your house, as all of us know they have trees, your house is cooler in the summertime. It, you know, creates, of course, the positive oxygen. So I imagine if you have a place with just no trees and it's just blank, especially probably in Oregon, it wouldn't be as.
As you know, we've had massive property appreciation in Springfield over the past years.
Yeah, well, that's nationwide, because of that. It wasn't because of trees, right?
Understand how we're focused that the property appreciation gains.
Just really sorry, go ahead.
I still have the floor, I still have the floor. Amy, did you wanna respond?
Just, just, just that I'm not a statistician, but they adjusted for inflation and appreciation. I didn't understand it, but they took into account how was the housing market in general and then looked at specific areas where the ordinance had protected trees and, but I'm not a statistician, so.
I, I have, Madam Chair, I have a question and a comment. I was, I've been listening very carefully, I was listening to Tim and to Kathy, their, their thoughts and concerns on this. What appears to be concerns to me. I understand that we are having a shortage. I also understand that we caught some positions at the recommendation of the administration. I understand we have a very tough financial situation. I get all that. But I also think that there comes a time in which we have to really, really sit down and look at what makes sense. As I sit here, we all know, I guess in the documents that we all see, and the ones that Amy said. What do we tell the kids with asthma? Although it is true, and we all know that some sickles have more trees, and it's based into all the social determinants than all the parts throughout the city. So I, you know, I, I'm a little concerned. I hear about this has been going for two, two, oh, three years now, if I'm not mistaken. At some point, we gotta move. We just can't keep dragging this on. I, I am a little concerned with that. And so I have a question, I don't know, Kathy, you still there? I don't know if Kathy, born or left. Hi Kathy. Kathy, if we, I see that they're fine, and you brought up the issue of money and hiring people. If, can we, I believe it's a thousand dollar, but but violation, correct? Am I reading that right? Section A, B?
Yes, there is, there is a month.
Can we, can we create a like item for that money to go directly to the forestry department as opposed to the general fund?
No, no. General fund revenues.
Okay. But similarly, the money can be reflected into the forestry later on. It was, it was said to me that we should try, and I know that, I think the police department has made this argument before, but the money can be redirected to them again.
We can hope so.
I hope so, okay. All right, so, Madam Chair, my last question is to Tim, specifically to Tim, if I may. Tim, I'm not quite sure what, if you don't mind, what is exactly your concern? I, I feel like I got lost somewhere the next year. You brought up some points, but I'm not clear what your concern is with this ordinance.
I've got, I've got prime, again, I, I, I'm not arguing at all with the benefits associated with this. I, I've got three primary areas of concern. One is the scale of it in terms of it impacting, the way it's written right now, up to close to ninety percent of the parcels in the city, land parcels in the city. That's huge. Secondly, there, we, we don't have any operational or economic impact analysis on what this would actually mean if implemented. And I think having that information is critical to making an informed decision on the part of the council with regards to the ordinance.
Okay, what's the third one? I think you said you have three.
Operational and economic impact.
Okay, now, who's, who's gonna pay for this?
We are, the city.
No, I know that, but what department will, will pay for it? I'm just curious, because I know. Because we're, we're, we're talking about, we have financial challenges.
Are you talking about the commission?
Well, no, I just wonder, where would the money be identified to pay for this potential study that Tim's talking about?
Oh, the study.
Oh, the study?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know. We've been, we've been getting studies done, you know, like
Do you know when Dave might be?
And typically, we.
Dave, Dave is still in the hospital, so I don't think he's in any, you know, condition to, to do it.
When we, when we start, when we started.
The, the canopy percentage on thirty-seven thousand parcels in the city is not something I would as knowing how much work that is, would ask a nonprofit organization to do at no cost. I would fully anticipate that that would be paid.
A lot of work.
Yeah, it's a lot of work. So that said, I do think there is eventually will be some cost. Maybe Regreen probably could do it, and maybe they could
Regreen.
Give us a reasonable price to do it, or we could look at other consultants. But I think no matter how you look at it, it's gonna be a cost associated.
Yeah, if I may, Alex.
If I can just quickly say, before, before Dave's illness, Dave had been talking with scans about how to do that and about what the cost would be and how much time he'd be willing to donate. Because we're a five oh one C three, he's a five oh one C three, you can do like in-kind donations between the two, and then we can write for a grant. And so that's why, like, you know, we all wish the best for Dave. And so if, if we can find another consultant, we would, but Dave was originally the partner that we were looking.
Got you. So Alex, my last question is, if we have thirty-seven thousand parcels in the city, roughly, in your professional opinion, how long will it take to get this study done, if it was to be done?
I mean, it, it would be several weeks. I don't think it's a year-long study, but there's, there's a lot of work to it. It's a lot of, probably the most efficient way would be to use GIS. But, you know, you have to have the expertise to do that and, and.
Still that's.
And, and it's time-consuming to do, not to mention to write up the report and, and consolidate all the information so that it's digestible to everyone here in the room. So, you know, I think it's a several-week project, you know, a couple of months, something like that. By the time we get a contract in place and all that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Alex. Madam Chair, I'm just gonna finish by saying that, first of all, thank you to all of you for doing this, Amy, Jay, everybody else who's been involved in this. I know you guys have spent a lot of time in this. And I, I think that we need to move forward with development, that is correct. We need to develop forward with housing. We all know we're running out of space, so we're gonna have to start going up, we're gonna have to restart refurbishing, we gotta figure something out. However, we are, I'm not a big advocate, I'm nobody. I think, I know nobody's advocating for this. We're not, we're not gonna throw the baby and the bathwater out. And so we need to, we need to ensure that our environment is protected, because we all know, this might sound like a cheat. I, I, we gotta do something to get this asthma thing under control here in the city of Springfield, which is part of many layers of issues and social determinants that we have here in the city. Well, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, counselors. And I, to your question, Tim, trees are like nature's investment portfolio. It's what I said, but this is more like, you know, curb appeal, it increases property value three to fifteen percent, depending on the species place. This is what I found. Energy savings, of course, privacy and noise redu, noise reduction, environmental and health benefits, of course. It says homes with mature trees often sell more quickly than those without them. I'm afraid of, you know, increasing the property values, because of course then we have to pay more taxes. But that's how I, I imagine they came up with that number.
That's again, I, I, I don't. I don't like trees.
Can I ask a question? The look-back period, it states here that the the chapter shall presume the existing conditions of the tree canopy of the parcel as it was defined forty-eight months before the application submission.
How do we, how do we get that length? You're almost going to look back four years prior in the terms of the canopy size?
Because Jay found the language in another ordinance. But again, the idea was that other cities were finding that the big developers could afford to go in, clear cut a lot, and then wait three to five years to then go in and construct on it, because they were so the large developers were using it as a loophole, because they would clear cut, then apply, and then say, there's no trees there.
So, so here's our language.
If you're a multi-billion dollar. If you're a multi-billion dollar.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
Like you just accent, uh, what, what Tim was trying to describe, I think, is, is still sticking in my head, and as you read the language of the draft, and I'm just gonna talk about the draft, because from a legal perspective, that's where I sit.
Right.
Is that we're talking about a wood, urban woodlands app. And so I think most people think of it, urban woodlands as something large in nature, a, a large swath of land, as you're trying to describe. And perhaps that's the common goal. But as you look into the language here, uh, there's no way to get around that this is extremely expensive for the homeowner, unwielding for the homeowner. Uh, anybody who doesn't know a single thing about trees is going to be having a heart attack, you know, thinking, trying to figure out what to do with this. So you're touching almost every homeowner in the city, I'm being a little broad on that, but there is a significant impact. So now you're getting into the very suburban areas of the city where people are trying to decide whether to take down a tree or not. Um, and so the process really is a formalized process. Every applicant, every applicant, whether or not you are taking a tree down, removing it, uh, damage or trimming of an existing private shaded tree must apply for a permit. I think almost every tree-cutting activity in the city has been able to go through that permit process. That permit process then comprises seven people of those, of the woodlands commission. In theory, volunteers or currently serving in other facilities, defined, whether it was for appointment by the mayor, member of, of Tim's groups would be, would be a part of it, and housing is included in there as well. So you're gonna have to have a seven-member commission making regular decisions about trees all the time. And so there is extreme costs that will be borne by the city and by any of the applicants. So this is a hu- this is a large tax increase for, for homeowners. If that's where the council wants to go, that's, that's your prerogative. I just think that, I don't know if there's a thought process about whoever would wanna collectively start talking about what the scope of this project should be, so that it could be perhaps manageable. Because I look at it from a perspective of one, from our administration side, we get extremely nervous about these type of proposals because we had a tornado. And when you have a tornado, you would have frozen out the entire swath of the tornado and every applicant trying to figure out what they could do or not do in an emergency situation. We have veterans golf course. I don't know about Fran Conia, but he's not about veterans golf course. If you take a look at that entire parcel that the city owns, most people think the golf course is the, uh, the course, you, you'll see, you know, trees are on the side, but we own everything from the sides to the middle. In all likelihood, anytime that the park and rep wanted to touch a tree at veterans, they would have to come through an application process.
This has nothing to do with public land.
Well, that's not exempted inside here.
We, we made an agreement with Alex that everything that's publicly owned by the, so we'll have to add that in, but I do. So we'll need to put that little legal language in there, but the agreement was public land, city land, building public, all of that is under Alex's ordinance. So this would have nothing to do with that. It also has, we, I didn't know trimming was in there, trimming would not be in there. And then also households are exempted if they're going to cut less than ten trees. So if somebody's doing anything so that we have an exemption in there, which is still negotiable, but I would just say public land is out, trimming is out, and anyone cutting less than ten trees is out.
We need to fix the legal language. Clearly needs to.
Trees bring out so much emotion.
No one's, no one's ever yelled at Alex about, no one's ever yelled at Alex about these.
So I just, just to conclude, with emotions running high, the, the only thing I can counsel everybody here is to, is we try to narrow or ju- or think about the scope as we remain open-minded, I think, understand that these are, this is a huge impactful proposal that we need to take our time with to make sure we get it right, because we're, we're talking about unintended consequences, and we wanna make sure we walk through all.
Right. I appreciate that. Thanks so much, Tom Counselor. Um, Heather?
Hi, thank you. Um, I appreciate all of the conversation. I've just been recently made aware of the ordinance. Um, and reading through it as a homeowner and a taxpayer, um, I do have some concerns that have been expressed in today's meeting. Um, one way that I'm wondering if, um, it could be amended in order to achieve, um, Counselor Davila's point of moving this forward and, um, preventing a stall, um, is when I think about this, I'm thinking about the larger, um, uh, tracts of land that are wooded, um, you know, having concern about the developers coming in and that loophole that Jay spoke of, and Amy, I think that's your name, um, in the blue as well, um, where, you know, they can switch up, uh, the parcels. Um, is it, in order to move this forward, would it be possible to remove, um, the already developed parcels, um, so that, uh, residents might not um, feel the burden of this ordinance, um, in order to achieve the goal of um, saving these green areas that we do have in our city. Um, so I would be happy to, um, clarify any of that, but I, I would like to see this move forward, um, in order to save the trees that we do have in order to achieve some of these benefits. Um, but I too have some concerns, um, being a homeowner um, and having neighbors, um, as well, who might not either have the, um, financial ability um, to adhere to this ordinance. Um, and then that could potentially impact my yard or my insurance rates, um, if people are not tending to their trees because they see that the ordinance is prohibitive. Um, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Heather, and, um, and I think that's a very good suggestion. Um, and we can certainly talk about it and, you know, figure out a way to, because I'm thinking exempting, um, homeowners from anything, honestly. Go ahead, Brian.
That's been our intent all along to, um, to take pressure, to not focus this on homeowners and already developed properties. And we figuring, trying to think how to do that, we came up with that number of ten trees as a negotiable starting point for, to say, oh, because it's hard for me to imagine put, that this would put pressure on private homeowners if they get a ten-tree head start before this has any application to them. But if we wanna play around with that number or, or, or create some other mechanism, the point is, we've already been trying to do that with what the works we've done so far, but we agree that more work needs.
Could someone point, could someone point, uh, me to where it says there's a ten-tree exemption? Because I did not read that, so.
Well, then we need to somehow that got.
Okay.
It's, um, I believe it's, let's see. Where we, so it's F, uh, section five, um, at owner occupants.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
And it's in my, my version, it's in red, which I think that was an addition. I don't know.
No, we, we put things in red that we figured would be negotiating.
Oh, okay.
So anything that you see in red, if you have a color copy, we figured would be part of a larger conversation.
What it says is proposals to remove more than nine trees greater than six inches. D V H shall not be granted a residential exemption, but the residential exemption is only for the waiver. And Steve, jump in and correct me if you think I'm wrong, looks like it's only for a waiver for the requirement of replanting or payment with no need for a hearing.
Right, you still have to apply.
You still have to apply, you still have to submit a plan, right.
That's the, and you, that'll be something we can.
So I think what we're going to do is our smaller committee scans, um, I know Vern McCarter is here from the Springfield Climate Justice Coalition, who's also been, um, working with us. Um, we can get together and maybe do some tweaks to it. And then at a later meeting, after we meet with some developers and some bankers, maybe do more tweaks, um, then we'll come back and have another meeting and to talk about it, because I do wanna put it on the city council agenda. I was, I have an ambitious goal of July fourteenth. Um, that might not happen, but that would be my goal, I don't know. Steve, okay, no, but you know, we're going forward, go ahead, Tom.
Last point, I think, is important to identify funding source to do the study. I think that is so critical to, uh, to this project.
So, yeah, I'm gonna see about, I like the idea of maybe finding a grant or something. And also, um, the architectural, um, landscaping students up at UMass might be interested. I'm going to reach out to, I forgot his name, I have his email, maybe I'll ask him about it.
Leavers.
Right, yeah, right, right. So, um, and see, uh, but again, finding some grants or something, I think would be helpful. Definitely reach out to Reg- Reg Green Springfield, see how much Dave would be willing to do. Um, and we'll find some money somewhere. I'm good at finding money, Tom. Um, Council Davila, last word.
Thank you, I do believe, um,
To George, George will have last word. Go ahead, Council Davila.
Okay, uh, yes, I was just thinking outside of the box, um, Alex, if we, with the replanting of trees on private property, uh, do you see any kind of synergy between, uh, the, the city's program of replanting fruit trees? Uh, with this, is there something if, uh, a homeowner could take advantage of the removal of tree based upon this ordinance? In, in other words, because the, the issue of cost effectiveness of costs, uh, prohibition, uh, inhibition came up about for the homeowner. So I'm just thinking, we have this beautiful program, uh, about planting trees for free. Um, does that play any kind of synergy with this?
So I, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to using, I think you're, you're referring to the Green and the Gateway Cities program.
Correct.
I wouldn't be opposed to using Gateway City trees to go towards any mitigation that's required under this ordinance. The issue that I see there is that it's a state-funded program, we are in our sixth year, or we will have been in, in our sixth year, um, second grant, um, round, but there is no guarantee that that, that grant will continue, um, in the future. Our current grant funds are actually, I believe, ARPA funds that the state receives, so while the state is very supportive of that program, there's no guarantee to Springfield that that, that money will, and that program will be here for perpetuity, whereas this ordinance will be there for perpetuity, so.
Yeah, thank you, Alex. And, and Madantia, I'm just gonna make a comment, uh, just to get it off my chest, so I can sleep better tonight. Uh, great meeting. I know, uh, great meeting, however, I have to take objections, uh, that I have heard several times in this meeting. The, the use or the implication of a potential property tax increase on homeowners because of this ordinance. Uh, I disagree wholeheartedly with this. I think if we don't continue with this ordinance, if we don't continue to be spearheading this, in my opinion, what we are being is, with all due respect, we're being penny-wires on palm fish. Uh, we've got to, we, we've gotta get this done. Thank you, Madantia.
Thank you, sir, and I do wanna acknowledge, um, Council President Fenton here and, uh, Councilor Curran. Um, George, you wanna go ahead? Unmuted?
Maybe he stepped away. He had his hand up for a while.
I'm so sorry. I'll let, um, Council Allen speak, and if it's okay with you, we'll go over a few minutes, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Council Allen.
Thanks, um, Madam Shear, um, just looking at the practicality of it, July fourteenth is two weeks from Monday.
I know. I know.
In, in the heavily vacation time of the year, so, I mean, as, as much as I, as much as I've been in your seat and wanna rush things, you know, get things to a certain point, you wanna get things to a certain point and have votes. You need seven votes. So, I, I think that's unrealistic for July fourteenth, and it's better probably just acknowledge that and say, we had this good discussion. And I, and I think the other part of it that goes with it is if you guys, if the small group solved the problems and solved the problems for the small group, they need to come back to this group, the, the solutions need to come back here for discussion.
That's the plan.
And so, um, that, that's, yeah, I know you wanna meet with developers, maybe that's the next meeting, I think that's, that's a great idea.
And, and July fourteenth, I know it's not realistic, I know.
So.
It's a wish. Go ahead, George, you have the last word.
Oh, well, I see that the meeting's wrapping up, so I don't wanna bombard you out with a whole bunch of comments and questions. But, um, so, so this whole ordinance is gonna pretty much affect anybody looking to build any kind of housing on an open lot.
If there's trees on it.
Correct.
If it has a certain percentage cover. So if it's an empty lot or an old parking lot or anything like that, there, it's nothing.
Right.
Well, right, right, but there's a lot of lots that have been overgrown for years, that have a bunch of trees on it and stuff like that. So now, um, when somebody looks at a parcel to, to purchase in order to build a, a house, does that affect the square footage of developable land now?
Well, it, it depends, right, because it has to meet the qualifications of what's going to be in the ordinance, which we haven't determined yet, because we're still tweaking it. Oh.
Okay.
Well, one thing I wanna say, George, is, um, yeah, the little weeds don't count, right? Um, but, um, in Springfield, we have a lot of undeveloped property, right? We have buildings, houses that are falling down, right? And I'm hoping that, you know, something like this might encourage developers to look at those parcels, look at vacant lots that are parking lots, or that are just, you know, the house maybe got taken away for whatever reason. Um, because we do need developers to develop in our city, we do need housing, um, certainly. Um, and we need our trees, you know, so I, I want us to figure out where we can come up with a happy medium, and we meet in the middle somehow so that we could breathe fresh air and have enough, um, development in the city. Okay, so with that, I'm going, is that, um, I, did you have another question, George? I see you're still unmuted.
Engaging, Sean, would you come in?
So we're not done yet, is what I'm saying.
What time does this meeting end?
It was supposed to end at two, I usually do an hour, but we're out, we're just about, um, we're five minutes over.
All right, well, so there'll be another meeting, correct?
There will be other meetings, absolutely.
All right, so I'll, I'll, I'll save it for the next one.
Okay, and you can always reach out to me.
I was gonna say, you can always email.
Yeah.
You're on the email list, you can just email questions too.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, so a lot of times conversations is easier than texting, uh, emailing back and forth.
Okay, well, come to the next meeting then. So, um, Tim, thank you, um, George.
So we've had trans, thank you, Zeta, great meeting, good to get the perspectives. We've had transitions in the city council office. Kelly left last August, Susan just left two weeks ago, a week ago. Coming back in September for a couple days a week, for a month or two, but she's gone for the summer. This is Daisy Lorenzotti.
She's awesome.
And, and, you know, Sean Young, they are taking, you can see the furniture has changed in this, the office. They are taking over the office. I think everybody should know who they are and feel confident to call, call Daisy and Sean with anything you would have called Susan and Kelly for.
Yeah.
Would you mind just saying who each of you are, so?
Sure. Oh, sorry, Denise Caputo.
Citizen Chris Jackson with the scans.
Scans.
You know, Kathy, thank you.
Yeah, those ten.
Anyone else you don't know?
But, uh, Dana's the wireless accurate of thirty four, six.
You know, Tom? All right.